No one keeps those packets, so.
I think he filled this out.
You got a packet, he got a patch.
No, but that has this in it. This. That's why he was probably delivering it.
We give it to him.
Yeah, well, he'll get it. I'm not touching it anymore. I touched it once and went and got that sanitizer.
Hello? How are you?
How's it doing?
Good seeing you.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm still making a queue, I'm sorry.
But you will, you will give us a walk between your last questions. My name is the only question we lose. You know what? When you made me go there, you made, look, you made me go there.
Thank you.
I told him. Look, I said you made me, you made me go there. That stuff was.
But she's a reply. Very good.
Now, you want to come visit the videos. You want to come to something that you signed for. Say that, use that. To take care of that. He would mention information. This was just me.
Oh, thank you. I'm not the person that you, I'm not being disrespectful. I'm telling you right now.
Thank you. Well, I told her, I knew my record was good when I left my family reunion at Ocean City Merrill's. And when my family found out, they wanted to beat me up. Because I came back late at night in the dark.
But I know this is the first one of the years.
See if this is done the way, we're supposed to check to see if this is done the way it's supposed to be. Tell me now, ahead of time. Well, just tell me ahead of time if it's right. I want to know, inquire in mind.
You don't get them every year?
Every year. Well, every, well, I'm on things that's different now that I wasn't on before. That's why I want to make sure. Yeah, when you add something new, you want to make sure some correct. Before I just check, 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 check. Now I can't do that. So who gets it? He does? I'm trying to get it out my head. Okay, so I'm leaving that there. I don't care what happens to it. I turned it over. Yeah, I don't think I saved the copy there. If I did, someplace. But this one, I put it where I knew would. In my office. I put on lipstick. Ask me why. It's all in here. Probably all over my face. But I said, I said, I said, I'm going to put it on because we are not. Are we not? I don't either. But every now and then I'll put lipstick on. That's, that's my key thing, a little lipstick. Yeah. I had to grab this up. They're coming together. Like, like a plan right there, two people together. Like a plan, babe. Are you good?
Hello, how are you? I didn't know that you continued that meeting until.
After I saw, say, nobody checked in, check.
I switched, but it don't feel any higher. It doesn't feel any higher. Let me drink some of this. What, how tall are you? So she's taller than you. I'm five six and three quarters.
So everyone here, um, that is in the audience, whether you work here or not, if I could bother you to just sign in, um, please? I appreciate that.
Yeah, I don't have a camera.
Sorry. Under the agenda, I'm putting the thing. That's why we keep Susan around.
That's what they keep saying.
Thing that I had on my list of tapes. Yes, sir. Hi, if I could just bother you to sign in? Did you mess up again? Uh, Ms. Johnson.
Does it say, what does it say on there? No, I thought you said Mr. Laws.
He did. You want to say it here?
I got to take this back home. It stays in my computer. I bought a real pretty one. I can't even.
Good afternoon, everyone.
If I could bother you to just talk in your mics. Yeah.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Planning Commission meeting for January eighth, twenty twenty-five. It is now two o'clock. Roll call, please.
Ms. Susan Dennis.
Present.
Leola Williams.
Here.
Eartha Banks.
Present.
Shirley Laws.
Here.
Mr. Harry Cotman is not present.
We have a quorum. Thank you. Now, before we get into, uh, public comment, um, on the agenda items, we need to do a reorganization. And I'm going to turn the meeting now over to the Vice Chair, Miss Leola Williams, for the nomination.
Please just talk into your mics, that's all.
Okay. All right.
You repeating? Are you okay? I said, were you repeating? Are you okay?
No, I'm okay.
Okay. All right, we're open for, uh, nomination for Chairperson. If anyone has a nomination, please say so at this time. Only have two members down. We need a nomination, please.
I nominate the previous chair.
Can you say the name, please?
Susan Dennis.
Uh, Susan Dennis has been nominated. I think, can we have a second?
A second, yeah.
It has been moved and seconded. Are there any other nominations? For the third time, are there any other nominations? If not, we close on the name of Susan Dennis, and we'll take a vote.
Ms. Leola Williams.
Yes.
Ms. Susan Dennis, who will abstain.
Abstain.
Ms. Eartha Banks.
Yes.
And Ms. Shirley Laws.
Yes.
It has been moved with the majority, turning it back over to the Chair, Susan Dennis.
Thank you. Uh, we now nominate, uh, need nominations for our Vice Chair. Any nomination? I nominate Leola Williams for Vice Chair. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none. Then we get a motion to vote on Ms. Leola Williams as our Vice Chair.
Make a motion to vote on Leola Williams as our Vice Chair.
Can I get a second? A second. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. And we need a Secretary. So we will open the floor for nominations for Secretary. Can I get a nomination for Secretary?
I nominate Eartha Banks for Secretary.
Second. Any other nominations?
I moved that the nominations be closed on that name.
Okay. All right, so it has been moved, and can I get a second?
A second.
All right, all those in favor of Eartha Banks as our Secretary, say aye.
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 So ayes have it. Thank you very much. Now, are there any public comments on the agenda items today? Or items not on the agenda? I'm sorry. All right, hearing none, seeing none. All right, we'll get into the approval of the minutes of the public meeting of December the eleventh, twenty twenty-four. Are there any corrections? Hearing none, can I get a motion to accept the?
I moved that the minutes from our last meeting be accepted within the necessary corrections.
A second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, that's fantastic. Now we'll move on to new business, and I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Gardner. Thank you.
Good morning, Planning Commission. Good afternoon, I'm sorry. I definitely don't want to go backwards. Um, the very first, um, thing that we will bring before you is a preliminary and final land development plan. Uh, the plan is titled Public Works Facility. Um, and it will be located at Second Street, at Pennell, um, Second and Pennell Street. It's in the light industrial commercial, um, district. And the applicant is the city of Chester. They are proposing, uh, the development of Public Works Facility on existing vacant land owned by Chester First Partnership LLC. The site alterations include a twelve thousand two hundred and sixty-six square foot garage and office, a forty-five hundred square foot salt shed, a forty-five hundred square foot covered maintenance facility, thirty-two paved off-street parking spaces, and twenty-four passenger vehicle spaces, and three with large vehicle spaces. And then one will have ADA, one will have ADA EV, and two will have two EV parking spaces. Before we, um, go any further, I'm going to bring up our Planner, Mr. Paul Fritz, and he will be able to take you forward.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
I wanted to get up before the engineer makes the presentation, because there's some items I want to clarify on this specific application. Um, as you know, this project is a city-sponsored project, so it's atypical for the Planning Commission to review it. Per Section thirteen sixty-three point one five of the zoning ordinance, the city is exempt from the zoning ordinance for uses or structures owned by the city or municipal authorities. Nonetheless, as we mentioned the last time we met last month when we looked at the sketch plan, um, since this project is publicly funded by ARPA, it was decided by the city to go through the land development review process to ensure the public, including yourselves as the Planning Commission, had opportunity to provide feedback. Just on that note, it was mentioned at the last meeting when we looked at the sketch plan for the Public Works Facilities, that we reach out to neighbors immediately adjacent to this project, and we did do that. And we ended up sending out nineteen notices to the nineteen properties that surround, uh, this parcel that we're going to discuss. So I just want to make sure you're aware of that as the Planning Commission. And we'll leave it open to the public for comment, um, after the engineer makes the presentation. Additionally, the preliminary final plans were distributed, as is typical for a land development, to the Fire Marshal's Office, Chester Shade Tree Commission, and the Delaware County Planning Commission. And I thought I would just highlight some of the comments that we received from those entities, just real quickly. From the county, they identified that there is various studies of Route two ninety-one, uh, that should be reviewed and coordinated with, and that the county also recommends that sidewalks on Lloyd, Front, and Pennell Street be repaired. From the Shade Tree Commission, uh, some of the items they mentioned, uh, include installing water quality bags installed in the inlets near the salt shed to protect against potential excessive salt runoff that would go into those inlets. And the Shade Tree Commission also indicated that appropriate trees should be specified for locations under overhead wires that surround the site and provide adequate soil conditions for all new plantings. Then lastly, from the Fire Marshal's Office, uh, they just wanted to confirm with the applicant, which is the city, obviously, uh, in coordinating with the final location for the fire department connection, the FDC, and providing some clarification on the electrical vehicle, or electric vehicle charging stations. Now what I'll do is I'll pass it on to Dave Schwartz, the city engineer and representing the project, and let him go through the planning department's comments, and then add additional comments if you want to.
Thank you. Can I come here and, good afternoon, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, with members of, uh, of the commission? Oh, sorry. Is that better? Okay, great. So this plan you've already seen, and it remains, it remains pretty much unchanged from what was, uh, seen last month in the sketch plan review. We have an eight bay garage and office as a combined building right here. Salt shed and overhang area for storage of some of the, uh, of some of the equipment that, that need to be, uh, weather protected. Parking area for employees with entrance off Lloyd Street. And, and another parking area, um, or another, I'm sorry, another yard area down here for the, for vehicles, vehicle maintenance, that kind of a thing, um, with entrance off of Front Street, and then a small exit out of the covered area for things like mowers, trailers, that kind of a thing. As regards to some of the comments that were received from the, from the planning department, as Paul indicated, um, many of the comments related to, um, to setbacks and shade trees, those kinds of things are a zoning issue and not an issue for land development. Um, but we have, I think, applied with most of the, um, of zoning ordinances regardless. Couple of, a couple of minor things that can go over. But, um, a couple of comments that, that, that were received, one is about the frontage on West Second Street, and that no more than sixty percent of, of the frontage can be metal sheeting. And there'll be some metal sheeting on the front, but there also will be, will be, uh, stone facing, uh, stone fascia, which will take up more than the forty percent required. Vehicle parking and the garage doors that obviously are, are placed in the rear of the building to comply with these zoning ordinances. Um, chain link fences are not allowed in the front yard of any of these, uh, properties. There is a fence around a, um, around a generator, but that fence will be ornamental, similar to what you see in other areas, I, I believe six feet in height. As far as utilities, there was a comment that, that you, new utilities should be placed underground. There is one utility actually, um, that we have to connect to the site. We did look at underground connections to, to, to the, the, the building. Unfortunately, the, um, electrical equipment at the poles along both Pennell and Lloyd Street, we were not able to get underground, um, wiring in there. And along West Second Street, probably may be aware, Delcora has a very large forest main, and we can't build anything on top of, of that forest main. It means if we wire on that forest main, they, they would probably dig up what was there, including any wiring or, or any, um, conduits for, um, for electrical power. So we do have one overhead, uh, wire leading from West Second Street onto the site that will be screened, um, with vegetation and, and, and planting. But, but, but that is the one thing that we were not able to, um, we're not able to provide full underground electrical, uh, uh, supply to the, um, the site.
That was at, whereabouts was that again? Second and?
Second, here, here's Pennell Street here, and Lloyd Street there, it's in between those two streets. So yes, it's, it's, uh, the pole right in the middle, middle, but close to, to, to the middle, uh, between those two streets. There was a comment also about, uh, sound levels and dust and, and odor, and Andrew Hayman's here from Public Works, but I believe that there was not going to be anything other than like utility work, uh, uh, on the vehicles, oil changes, that kind of a thing. So I don't believe there'll be any major noises or, um, or, or odor, other than that, that would come from like a garage. There's, there's, there's a question about lighting, and their, and lighting plan was included in our, in, in, in our submission. I believe it does conform with the, um, with, with the comments. We are in, we are coordinating with the fire department as well on a couple of, uh, outstanding issues, including, um, the FDC, uh, uh, location and the EV charging station location. Those are issues that we're working through. Think that we have them pretty much resolved, or, or pretty much, you know, resolved or close enough to it. We will have those, um, taken care of, we hope, in the near future. Um, and then for landscaping goes, it, uh, ten percent of the lot, um, is, is required to be, to, to be landscaped. We actually are, um, going to be doing, I think, a bit more than that. The, um, currently, the lot has ninety-two percent impervious cover, which is actually above the threshold of ninety percent in the zone. We are reducing that to seventy-three percent, and we did include a landscaping plan along with our submission, which has all of the landscaping trees, street trees, shade trees, all of those things in the plan. A lot of screening on the streets. We also recognize that the East Coast Greenway is going along West Second Street in the future. That is the future site of the East Coast Greenway, and we have maintained a very big setback from West Second Street, partially for the East Coast Greenway, partially because of the aforementioned sur easement. Those, you know, that, that I believe was one of the issues that the planning, that the planning, that the county planning commission mentioned, with the, the location, was coordinated with the location of the East Coast Greenway, and we provided ample space for, for, for that. I went over the, um, fire commissioners' comments already. Um, as far as the Shade Tree Commission, a lot of the, a lot of comments there were regarding weed mats and staking, which we can certainly comply with. And the other one was about, um, subsurface soil conditions. And we are sending, um, a crew out there next week, actually, to do what's called a Phase Two environmental site assessment. We performed a Phase One ESA. We believe the site is clean. We are doing our due diligence. You know, you know, just to, just to be sure, and they'll be out there next week to, to do, um, soil samples, borings, and those kinds of things on, on the site, just so we're sure that the soil beneath the site is not, not need to be disposed of in, in any kind of special way. Um, I believe that you all received a handout of the, um, site rendering, which is also up there on the, uh, on the board, and that is the, um, that's the rear of the building right there. Office is on the right, garage is on the left of the front building and the salt shed, and covered area is in, is in the rear. Just want to know if you have any questions. We, um, along with me today are, um, Eric Bauer, one of our, one of our, one of our architects, and Kevin McCartney, who's leading our, our site design efforts. Sorry, uh, is leading our site design efforts.
All right, any questions?
I have a question. Can I let you go first, Madam Chair? Did you have a question? Okay. I was going, can you hear me?
Mm-hmm.
I was going over, um, the microscopic material. And, um, on the first sheet, you talked about an underground storage tank, number four. That's been taken care of, it's being pulled out, or that's remaining?
I'm sorry, the underground storage tank for stormwater, the underground storage tank?
Number four.
Sure. My name is Kevin McCartney. I'm also with Colliers Engineering and Design. Um, note number four in the plan identifies that there were no underground storage tanks known at the time of the application. So the Phase Two will confirm that. That's one of the reasons we're doing the Phase Two. Um, in the Phase One assessment, there was nothing identified, historical data to represent that there is an underground storage tank present.
You said there is none?
Correct.
Even though number four says there is one?
Note number four, I'll read it for you. The existence of an underground storage tank, if any, was not known at the time of the survey.
Okay. My other question, um, gotta get them out.
It's quite right.
Okay, um, is this on the floods plane, flood zone?
No, it is not.
Because, I mean, that line looks so funny. I said, how does the line cut across like that for the flood zone? So it's definitely not on the flood zone, and you're not going to have a problem because it is on the flood zone.
Correct. We are outside of the hundred-year flood zone.
Okay. Number forty-four. I have to see it. Can you read number forty-four?
Sure. Sure. The city of Chester is not liable and is not providing any guarantees regarding any stormwater, wetland erosion control, or any other review.
So can you explain that to me, please?
It relates to, I think, what was discussed at the beginning of the meeting about the waiver, or not, a city project not having to go through a zoning approval process.
Okay.
Even though we are doing so for land development application, that is in front of your board today, it's a courtesy.
Okay. Can you explain number twenty to me also? You can read it.
Sure. Number twenty is the property is serviced by private water and public sewer. And I believe that is, a type of, it should be public water and public sewer.
So that's wrong.
Correct, yes. There's public water and sewer available for the property.
Almost finished. I'll let somebody else go until I find my other page.
Anybody else?
Yeah, I had a question as far as the lighting. I know you said most of it, some is being done underground and some is being above ground, or none is done underground?
I'm sorry, are you referring to lighting or stormwater?
Lighting.
Lighting?
Yes.
All of the lighting, there are poles within the property itself that will be for the parking areas and the areas of the truck traffic, the internal portion. And there are building mounted fixtures as well that are above ground. And then there are some bollards, I believe, that go to, that connect the, there's a patio area for employees at the front that connects to the public sidewalk on Second Street that are lit by bollards.
And most of your wiring, is that done under?
Correct, all the wiring for the lighting will be underground.
Could you read number forty-five and explain that, please?
It says, no street lighting is proposed. So for this project, there are no improvements to the street lighting that already exists around the property.
Are there, I mean, there is street lighting there already, and you're not improving on it, is that what you're saying?
That is correct, yes.
Okay. There are trees up and down Second Street already. So you're proposing more, or you're just doing something with the ones that are already there? What is your plan?
So for landscaping along Second Street, we are proposing all new trees along the frontage of the property.
Okay, the reason why I ask that, are you being careful what you are planting? Because I look at some other plants that were put in the city ages ago, and it ended up with sidewalks torn apart. So are you careful about the planting of the type trees you're putting in? Or how it's done?
Yes, absolutely. Our landscape architect has proposed a species of tree that is known not to grow larger than the tree pit it is placed within. It is still, meets the shade tree requirement, however, it doesn't grow to, you know, a hundred feet tall, like you may see in some of the other locations.
Clarifications as well. The trees that are in the right of way on West Second Street, those are remaining. I believe that's what you indicated, right? Those are remaining. Additional trees, yeah. I'm sorry, the ones, yeah, oh, those are proposed, okay.
For the exact same reason that you point out is...
I just wanted to make sure we didn't end up with that sidewalk.
Correct.
Catastrophe again.
Yes. The material that we are proposing will ensure that you don't have any buckling of the existing sidewalk.
Okay. And the fencing, let my last question, I promise. I saw a picture of the fencing on one of these documents. It's like a wrought iron with a curved front, but that's only going to be where? Where's that going to be?
That will be in the front of the property. On the middle, or roughly the middle of the building, there is an emergency generator that is necessary for the operations. That will be screened by, I won't say trees, bushes, they're taller, they're about ten feet tall, bushes, and that ornamental fence for security purposes.
All right. Thank you.
They're not always asked, where's the dumpster?
Sure. The dumpster is located centrally to the property, right about in the middle there.
Somewhere in the back.
Correct.
Somewhere up towards the front. Okay, any questions for you, Cheryl?
No, I'm trying to blow this up to read it. This is difficult.
Why are you asking for a waiver? Question that I have, for street trees on Lloyd, Front and Pendle. Oh, I'm sorry, let me take this off. Why are you asking for a waiver for your street trees along Lloyd, Front and Pendle Street?
The reason we're asking for that waiver, two reasons, in my opinion. One is because of the existing utility infrastructure that's already there, that there's some underground utilities that are running close to curb lines that would prevent the trees from drawing and growing. The second was that the walkway itself would be impacted, where in some locations it would be reduced down to less than four foot passable width. So we thought that the important aspect would be to have a wider sidewalk for pedestrian use.
I did see your page, I broke my promise. I did see, I saw your page with the fire engine and all, so there is no, it looks like there's no problem getting an engine in there fast and out?
Correct, yes.
You talked about parking. You asked for thirty-two slots, but then when I counted up, it's only thirty-one.
Yeah, there might be maybe a discrepancy. We'll double check the numbers, but I know we added an EV parking space for the employee. So what I think might be the discrepancy is there's three EV charging stations for truck traffic, or the trucks, the future trucks.
And do we have them? Do we have EV trucks?
Not yet.
Not yet? We'll get them as part of that. Okay, good.
So that includes those three, that in the employee parking area itself, I think I'm counting twenty-eight, and then there are three EV charging. Total thirty-one. We had four EV.
And I thought the paperwork said thirty-one at first.
Yep.
Yeah, it's thirty-two. You said thirty-two then, at first it said thirty-one.
There are, what happened was there were initially four EV charging stations for the maintenance equipment, the larger trucks internally to the site. That reduced down to three at the last minute before we made the submission. There is an additional EV charging station for employee parking that is also EV accessible in the employee parking area. So there are still four EV charging stations. However, we converted one from the truck, the larger vehicle, EV charging, to a passenger vehicle charging.
And did you ever say what you plan to do with the south perimeter?
South perimeter? There is, that's the main access into and out of the property for cities, larger vehicles. There is screening that we are proposing along the rear of that. Both, there is a stormwater pipe that we are proposing on the southern side of that square building, to the south there, that prevents us from putting in actual trees, but we are putting in larger shrubs that grow to be about ten feet tall, as well as the fence in that area to screen the operations along that building section. The rest of the section has additional landscaping to it. One of the comments we received was to also look to provide some shade trees in that area for the parking area, which we plan to do. I think we'll fit about two, maybe three additional trees into that area.
You talked about that there will be regular maintenance, so wouldn't be a lot of sound problems. What about people who have asked about the dust and whatever? Is there any? People who have, you know, bad...
Absolutely, yeah. There's not going to be anything that would churn up a lot of dust back there, really. It's going to be some, I mean, the maintenance we're talking about is, according to Mr. Hayman, are oil changes, and that would be like the probably, you know, tire rotations maybe, but nothing else going to generate a great deal of dust.
All right, I think that's the end of my questions. Does anybody else have any more? Anybody in the public, would you like to come up and comment or give your opinion? And if so, please come forward, state your name and your address.
Good evening, all. My name is Carlos Hatchett, and I'm a member of Providence Baptist Church, which is on the opposite side of Second Street. I do have a couple of questions. We actually talked about the noise, the noise, there won't be a great noise level, will there? Also, will there be any hazardous materials? Also, if you drive down... I'm sorry. If you drive down Second Street now, you will see that Providence is actually now under construction, but when the property is completed, we've often used that side of Pendle as an overflow when we do church services. Will there be any issues with us using street parking as an overflow?
So that question wouldn't be, this is just concerning the building, they don't have any control over the street.
Okay, so that's why I said street parking is fine.
The only impact street parking that we anticipate so far at Pendle, there's a small exit down here, which will eliminate one or two spaces, but, right there. But other than that, it's going to be the same way it is right now.
That's all the questions I have now. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who want to come forward? State your name and your address, please.
Jose Wagner, ten twelve West Second Street. My first question would be, you live on the south side? Directly across from that facility, where your new facility will be. When we walk out of our front door, what is the view that we're going to see? It's got to be better than what we're looking at now.
Well, counsel, my name is Eric Boger, I'm with, the architect with Colliers Engineering As you can see, this is the view from the southeast corner, which is the back street, Front Street, and Lloyd Street here. So less the screening and the fencing that we're going to put up here, this would be the view of the back of the salt shed and the back of the building. This is Front Street looking that direction. Oh, you're on Second Street.
Facing Second Street is what the question is related to.
The front of the building will be partially stone facing, then we plan to add in, yeah, there you go. And then we plan to add in a lot of screening, trees and vegetative screening along the front there as well. Yep.
This right here, is this the opening?
That is from, I'm sorry, that is, this is the rear of the building. I'm sorry, that is, what that is, that is right here, that is a area where the generator is, and that'll be screened off by ornamental fencing. And some trees, and landscaping.
So the noise factor will be, say, rather less than what we're hearing now, with what's going on there now? The tractor trailers, the tractor trailers are going in and out of that lot right now? So it would be less noise? It won't be, they'll be gone, of course, but there won't be clanging and banging and, you said it won't be dust, but how about fumes from you got, your vehicles? Not your EVs, of course, but from some of your other vehicles? You know, sometimes you can get diesel fumes if they're just sitting and running, that kind of situation.
There's, keep, let me just go back here. The, it, okay. Anyway, there are a few city vehicles that'll be back there, you know, and we're not talking anything, no eighteen wheelers, obviously, nothing, three axle, most of it are going to be, you know, a couple of dump trucks, a couple of pickup type trucks, those kind of trucks. So, you know, there'll be less fumes, I think, than what you see from eighteen wheeler. But as far as dust and clanging and those kinds of things go, we do anticipate any heavy maintenance back there. I, were they fixing snow plows? I forget if that was, you may hear an occasional clang if there's like a snow event, they're putting plows on or something, but there's not going to be anything, any consistent loud noises from back there. It's going to be a typical Public Works garage.
Have an assessment as you can, how it will affect the traffic pattern.
Traffic will be minimal to the site. We only have thirty spaces. We are talking to PNDOT right now. There are a couple of former driveways, I guess you could say, on West Second Street leading to the site, but we anticipate that it will be a, that PNDOT will either give us a waiver, a waiver based on limited trip generation, and also based on the fact that we're replacing trip generation currently with the trucks that are on site. We are talking to them, we're, have a meeting with them set up in the next couple of weeks, but we anticipate that will be fairly, that perimeter will be fairly smooth.
So your entrance and exit is going to be on the front street side? Of course, you'll have to come in on Lloyd and Pendle. Will there be a light?
That's what I was going to ask.
A light somewhere, because right now, traffic is... I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Traffic is, speed limit says thirty-five, but we're doing, they're doing seventy or more.
I know.
So, and there's accidents that happen. I've seen at least twenty-five to thirty accidents just between Lloyd and Pusey Street, which is the next street over. So how is that going to affect traffic pattern? Also, with the games, with soccer games, or if ninety-five is backed up, that to ninety-one is get off to get back on to ninety-five. So how would that affect, you know, residents getting out on to two ninety-one? Because right now, it's hard to get out on two ninety-one, going either way. So how would that affect that?
Well, so there is a left turn lane going into the site from two ninety-one, so that is a, you know, so vehicles do have a spot to kind of wait as they're making that turn. And then there are several projects currently being designed along, I'm sorry, I keep seeing twenty-one. I already called twenty-one. I do too, still. There are a few projects that are going on along two ninety-one. There are several projects that are actually in design right now. And those are going to be, there are a few of them that are, that will, that will affect the cross section, make the cross section a bit narrower to slow people down. There are some that are, that are for the Greenway, mentioned earlier, the East Coast Greenway, streetscaping. Those are all projects that are, I believe the roadway one is in design right now. So we didn't want to put anything in here as part of our project, because they are right now doing a more, a larger scale project through the state.
So what's the purpose of, what is this building?
Public Works Garage. Oh, I'm sorry. That's people who do the, your general, you know, street plowing, mowing, small repairs, run the city.
Where is that located now?
Currently, it is located a few, a few blocks to the north, near the creek.
So why you want to move it to that position?
Because the current space is decrepit, thank you. I don't want to use that word, but I, it's, it also is very small. And actually, what is happening up there, Delcora, who is... And actually, what is happening up there, Del Cora, who is sewer provider for the area, it wants to put in a new pumping station to help reduce the combined sewer overflows into the creek. And that location where the current public works garage is, is an ideal spot for them. So actually, the way that this entire thing came together is Del Cora assisted with purchasing of this lot, and then allows the city to move our facilities to this lot to give them the lot that they need for pumping station. So that's a bit, so that's a bit of a benefit as well, as it will allow more water to be processed and reduce the number of sewer overflows into the creeks.
So how would that affect the homeowners on two ninety-one, on, across the street? Property value go up, go down? Will, will there be more, um, sorry. Will there be, you're talking about lights? Will those lights be on all night, being through, coming, you know?
No, no, the, the public works, uh, uh, the facility, unless there's a storm, unless there's a snow event or anything, the lights will be on during normal business hours, you know, eight to five. And as far as property values, it's, you know, there currently, there's a vacant lot right there. There will be a, you know, new building. It, it's industrial building, but it's going to have some nice spacing and some vegetation along there. So, I can't tell you that, that property will absolutely increase in value, but it, there will be a building there.
So will it sit, come all the, up to the, to the sidewalk?
Not quite, no, no.
As far as it's, how, how far does it sit back in front of the buildings? How far does it sit back?
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. How far does the properties, the building, how far up to two ninety-one, or does it sit back?
It'll be back about fifty feet.
Which is, can you show me like, up on there?
Oh, um...
About, where the...
Probably...
So where that car is?
Yeah, yeah. Utility pole, yeah.
Okay, so that's to be the, the front of the building, face of the building?
And the reason for that is because there is a, if you mentioned before, a sewer easement along twenty-one. And we have to stay out of the, of the easement by law. Or else if there's ever work to be done on the sewer, the building gets, gets destroyed. So, um, yeah.
Okay, now, does that, so it's just what's in the fenced area? Is what you're...
Currently, that's what's, that's what's there, was, the building would be farther back from that.
The area that you're talking about building is the, just the fenced in area?
Yes.
Not the little oval shape that's...
No, 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 not the oval shape. Not, not the boulevard area within Lloyd Street, no. It's entirely contained within West Second, Pennell, Lloyd, and Front Street.
Okay. Another question. If you get heavy rain, that area floods towards the boulevard. And in front of my house. So the water doesn't drain, there's no drainage in front of my house. You have one at Pennell, I mean, at Lloyd, no Pennell. You have one at Styles. Then you don't have another one until you get to Lloyd Street. So, water pools right in front of my house. So, will you guys be doing anything for, no?
So, so, nothing on West Second Street. What I can tell you is that on the site, we actually are doing a good amount of stormwater improvements there. We're putting in underground storage, and we're putting, and we're, and we're grading the site for, so that the drainage will remain, you know, will, will, will first drain in, into that sub, in a subsurface, uh, uh, system. We can't do anything on twenty-one, uh, because that, that's PennDOT road, and that would require a lot more, um, a lot more work, a lot more coordination, and frankly, a lot more funding as well, so...
So when, when, when is the proposed starting of the project?
We are looking for, um, we, we, if we get a recommendation for approval from the Planning Commission, we, we would then ask for a resolution before City Council later on this month, and then hopefully get it out to bid shortly afterward. And that usually takes about ninety days. So, everything goes smoothly, and we have no reason to think that it won't. The project, uh, construction will probably begin in mid to late spring, I would say, give or take.
So how would that construction affect the homeowners? I mean, your in and out, building, digging, whatever you guys are doing?
There would be, there would be, I mean, there would be your, your typical construction, you know, noise. It, it, it would be screened, I believe. There is, there are requirements for, for doing that. That's something that we, that worked out with the contractor. They, there are certain ways to, to mitigate noise during certain hours of the day and, and everything, but, but, but yeah, that, that would be your typical construction. It, it will all be contained within that, that site, though. And there'll be measures taken for erosion, for erosion control, so you don't get a lot of, you know, dust and dirt in the air and everything.
So what about, um... So the project won't be started like six or seven o'clock AM in the morning, correct?
I'll double-check the ordinance of the city, but yes, I believe that, I, I believe that there are, and, seven AM, yeah.
Seven AM? That's kind of early for a residence, and I'm just saying, but, you know, until what, five or, four? Seven to eight PM?
That's per the ordinance.
Okay.
We can, we...
Okay. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I have questions. You have catch basins. How many catch basins? I think I saw fifteen. Is it fifteen catch basins?
Believe it's...
I believe there are ten. There's a trench drain also at the exit of the store, or the square building, where there's an access on to Pennell. There's a trench drain there, and then I think there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I think there's nine other catch basins throughout.
One that says catch basin, S fourteen?
That would just indicate the structure, that manholes would also be included in that, so...
That's why I'm saying that's for the floodwater.
Oh, correct. You're absolutely correct. The stormwater system that we have designed here will greatly reduce the runoff of stormwater that is currently present and coming off of the property. In fact, the basin that we have underground there will infiltrate up to six thousand five hundred cubic feet of water before it discharges anything into the public system. So, as of right now, it's almost about a fifty to seventy-five percent reduction in rate control for the site.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Might I jump in?
Oh, surely.
Thank you, my name is Andrew Hayman. I'm the Public Works Director here in the City of Chester. My address, my home address is three oh nine Edmonds Avenue, Drexel Hill. But today, I'm representing the city here, one East Fourth Street. So this would be our new facility, I understood. I'm actually currently in another meeting and this meeting, so I'm bouncing back and forth. I understand there was a question about exhaust or fumes coming from some of our vehicles. I would say, first off, that while I'm not at the current site of the property now, all the time, I would say that it would be generally in keeping with the fumes that are off from the vehicles that are at the current site, which obviously doesn't have the exposure, has the exposure of not having the structure blocking the view of those vehicles. So you've got some trucks parked out there right now. Those are generally roughly equivalent in what they're, what they're off putting to what, what you would see once this building is built. We've got two front-end loaders, we've got a couple trucks, I think they get up to twenty-nine thousand pounds. They certainly can have some exhaust, but again, nothing out of the line of a normal pickup truck or a vehicle. And I would also say that their operation will almost exclusively be away from this property, so when they're here, they're going to be on the site for a temporary amount of time, and then they'll be going out to other locations. So I, I wouldn't expect them to be lingering and emitting fumes for very long periods of time at all.
Can I answer your question? About the sound and the...
Forgive me, I don't know who asked the question.
That kind of answers the question about the fumes, you know? My other question is, you said the entrance is on front, I mean, Front Street is the entrance?
Yes.
So there will be no, um, coming up, coming in off of Second Street? Two ninety-one turning into the building?
No, there's no, there's no way to access the building from two ninety-one. That's sort of the rear of the building, that's where you'll see the trees and the green space. You'll see the rear of the building there, but there'll be no access to the building from that side, so...
So the rear of the building is two ninety-one?
Yes.
Front Street is the front of the building?
Yes, the, the building is facing towards Front Street. I'm sorry, Second, that's Second there, isn't it? Yes, sorry, towards Second, so two ninety-one is the rear of the building, forgive me. All right, there's probably technical definitions, I'm misspeaking, so I'm going to let our engineer...
Two ninety-one is, is the front of the building. This view here, the parking lot, the salt shed, the garage entrances, all that, that is the back of the building, yes. That is, you won't see that. You'll be seeing the front of the building, which is going to be nicer. Than that.
All right, thank you.
No, thank you, that's why we have an engineering architect to do the work, I'm not one.
No problem.
Thank you.
No problem.
Are there any more questions?
No. But I'm, because I'm familiar, very familiar with the area, even though your entrance is on Front Street, Second Street is facing their homes.
Yes.
The church is on that corner. That's a busy area. So some type of plan should be considered as far as four-way stop, red light, something, because that's, that's an accident waiting to happen at that corner with that. Because even though you're entering on Front Street, you still have to go down two ninety-one to get to that area. And Second and Pennell, and Second and Lloyd are busy areas.
Yes, and like I mentioned, there are, I mean, there, there, we're not, we're not looking at a signal at, at a location, and a four-way stop would not, on two ninety-one, that, that would, that, I can tell you right now, PennDOT would not put in a four-way stop there. As far as the signal goes, like I said before, there, there is a design project currently along two ninety-one. So, we didn't want to do anything that would impact that project. That's going to be a comprehensive safety improvement along the roadway. So, um, yes, we, we're not putting a signal, there is existing left turn lane, though, separated from, so, so, so turning into the site will be a little bit, will be fairly easy, you know, along two ninety-one, as it, you know, as it is, to Lloyd or to Pennell. But yeah, we're not looking at a signal.
That, that turning lane does not stop the accidents that have been happening out there. And there have been multiple, cars, lives lost, cars lost. So, I mean, yeah, you got a turn lane, but you still got people who are doing, like you said, seventy, sixty-five, so. I understand what you're saying, that's a PennDOT issue more than...
I would also just note, forgive me for jumping in here, obviously, Dave touched on some of the issues, so we are certainly aware of the issues on two ninety-one, it's horrible. So we had a resident come talk to, at a council meeting just this morning about it. This is a constant issue. Like Dave said, the, a lot of that requires PennDOT approval, I think pretty much all of which we would support, but PennDOT can be very disagreeable sometimes, certainly not against it. One thing I will note is that I wouldn't anticipate there to be a substantial difference in the volume of vehicles that are coming back to the site versus what you're already seeing that would be going there. Obviously, there's got to be some number of vehicles that are entering and exiting the site. Our staff, we're talking about a very limited number of, of vehicles for the Public Works and Parks Department. So, you know, we're, I think we, we're talking about a combined seventeen vehicles that would likely be operating out of this location at any one time. They're not likely to be, and again, they're, they're likely to leave for, for five, six hours at a time, maybe more in some cases, before returning. So I wouldn't expect there to be a substantial number of vehicles coming and going. You would have employee traffic in the morning coming to this location, but again, also, they would tend to just come in the morning and leave in the afternoon. We're talking about thirty-one parking spots, I, which I think, you know, is, is more than suitable for our combined offices. So, we're not talking about a massive flow compared to some other facilities you may encounter with vehicles coming and going all day. And being, this is not a public-facing site, you're not going to have members of the public coming in, and, and they should be coming here to City Hall, where there will be a public works representative downstairs who can assist them with all their public works-related needs.
I'll point out, so the site currently is being used as a, as a storage for car carrier trucks, and a lot of the people who drive them. So, we'll be removing traffic that, that currently goes in there in favor of, in favor of some employees and some city vehicles. So, it's not going to be, as Andrew mentioned, a great deal of difference with regards to, to volume. But I mean, we, working with PennDOT, I do a lot of that in my line of work, and, and it can get, it can get, it can get very, very drawn out. And I think with PennDOT already funding projects on this road, and believe me, safety is one of my biggest concerns. Yeah, I, 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 that's, I've been thinking about that constantly. And this, and twenty-one is that. Fortunately, there is relief, hopefully, on the way, it's under design now, and that's going to be something that gets moved farther along, it's a longer-term option. But we didn't do anything for this locate, for this location, for this site, because kind of out of our hands, it's really in hands of PennDOT, unfortunately.
Any more comments?
My best Ron Madison, who's usually here during this meeting, I can read off of action that I would recommend that the Planning Commission take, if that's okay with you?
Yes.
The motion being to recommend that the City Council grant preliminary final land development approval of the City of Chester Public Works Facility application as presented on the plan set prepared by Colliers Engineering and Design dated October eleventh, twenty twenty-four, conditioned upon addressing the remaining comments of the Planning and Zoning Department's review letter dated January third, twenty twenty-five, Fire Marshal's Office review memo dated January seventh, twenty twenty-five, and the Chester Shade Tree Commission's review memo dated January eighth, twenty twenty-five. That would be...
That would be the motion.
That would be the motion. You don't need to memorize that, but I can put it in front of you.
Well, as stated. So can I get a motion as stated?
If they let me read it. If I can read it like he did.
Yes, you don't read it?
I have no way. Oh, I forgot, I don't have my, I don't have my glasses on. Okay. I move that the city be granted preliminary, well, that the city be granted, okay, I don't know where you read. Okay, so I'm going to read it just like that. I move that the recommendation that the City Council grant preliminary final land development approval of the Chester Public Works Facilities application as presented on the plan set prepared by Colliers Engineering and Design dated October eleventh, twenty twenty-four, conditioned upon addressing the remaining comments of the Planning and Zoning Department's review letter dated January third, twenty twenty-five, the Farm, Fire Marshal's Office review memo dated January seventh, twenty twenty-five, and the Chester Shade Tree Commission review memo dated January eighth, twenty twenty-five. That this be approved?
I second. I second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. No nays. So it has been approved as read.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. Okay. We're going to go to the Director's Report.
Meeting, the meeting is still going on, go ahead, you can...
Director's Report by Mr. Fitz.
Yes. And really, we have one I Yum to go over with you today, and that's the early initial draft or zoning or more zoning ordinance in that, to address smoke shots and tobacco stores. I'm not going to go over the entire memo that I sent you, I hope you have the chance to look at it. Today was just to give you an opportunity to compare the initial options. What I want to make clear to you is that this is a process to get something like this amended, as you know, and there's... amended, as you know, in a zoning ordinance. This is the first step. We wanted to give the Plan and Commission a chance to have a voice, ask some questions that maybe we can address at all your time, and also maybe bring those questions to the citizens. But again, it's a process, it needs to go through county review, city review, committee review, ultimately the council. And actually, you will recommend it in another meeting, eventually the council will vote on it. So it could be a month or two or more now, or two months. But having said that, I hope the memo was clear and why we're doing this amendment. We've talked about this a little bit before. But I did want to bring up, if there's any questions on where we, where we are saying these types of retail facilities would go, the two zoning districts that I mentioned, the CBD, which is our central business district, and the MIC, which you can see on the map here. Having said that, I just want to make sure to you're aware of the distance requirements related to that. So in the CBD, to have one in the CBD, you have to get thousands feet from the school, existing daycare, I think there was another facility that we mentioned that had to be away from, which would limit it pretty much.
Daycares.
Daycares, yes, exactly. And we also did not think the LIC, which remember is the Light Industrial, was appropriate because it is somewhat scattered around the city, the LIC, and it's got neighborhood, neighborhoods, residential neighborhoods around the LICs. So we thought the MIC and CBD were the most appropriate. Again, you have to have at least one zoning district, and then you're reasonable for having this somewhere. But I'm happy to take any questions, Kim and I are eager to hear what you think, and we'll jot down the questions if we don't have answers for them today, and we'll keep pushing this along through the process.
Oh, so you want us to put, write down questions for you?
No, you don't have to write them down today, you can either ask them verbally now, or anytime in the next month, you can email us with questions or thoughts.
Well, I have a question. My first one is, what about the ones that are existing? What are we going to do about those?
Well, they would be, they would be existing, and they would be allowed to exist as a non-compliant use. So if they decided to expand or change, they would have to adhere to the zoning ordinance. So they would be allowed to be as is out there.
So are you referring to a smoke shop? Are you referring to a retail store that has smoke paraphernalia?
Probably the smoke shops, because that's the new thing that's coming.
So you're saying there is a smoke shop here?
I guess it could really apply to both.
Yeah.
It could apply to both.
If there is one out there, which I don't.
Yeah.
Well, I think there's some illegal ones.
I think there's a lot.
There are illegal ones, and they're pop, and they've popped up, and they're, they are a concern, because they don't have permission to do it, but they're there. So those, those would have to go through the process.
Correct.
Okay. Because that's the concern, that they put up these illegal smoke shops in neighborhoods.
Right. We want to monitor that. So right now, we're amending the ordinance.
Okay.
Once we have that inserted in the ordinance, then it can be addressed.
Through Ellen and I.
We want the language in the ordinance, so we just want you guys' contribution.
But Al Sergeant Jr., our zoning enforcement officer, would be part of that enforcement protocol. Find those, discover those, and.
And enforce.
Identify and reinforce.
Okay, also, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Eventually, you're going to need another, because you can't do it all.
We have the lot to go over, but the other part of that is just administering it.
Right.
So thankful that, like we've mentioned when we introduced Al, we have some, because we've never had some.
Right, right, okay.
It's crucial that we have him, he's going to be a busy person.
Yes.
Or is a busy person.
Okay.
Okay, I know that, I guess I understood it correctly, that those, if there are places where they're selling already, that they are grandfathered in or something, but there is no monitoring when it is not done correctly, because 99 million folks sell Lucy's, and that is against the law, but nobody's coming in on them, and so they do it. So if people aren't going to check to see if what we've put down is being done, what's the?
Well, I mean, that's a great point, the thing is, you can say that about the whole rest of our city code period, and we do do our best, and a lot of it's by citizens knowing about these noncompliant businesses or operations in current, we have to implement all that. But it's a good point, it's not foolproof, best we can do is, is do our best, of course. The idea behind having this amendment at this time is we have nothing. So we could get a lot more of these, nothing to leverage against them, being put in, in our, mostly commercial districts, that's not necessarily what we would like to see. But that, it's a totally valid question, you just.
Yeah.
It's like, how do you enforce this? It is tricky, but giving up the language in zoning, we can do something to enforce that, so we can call them violations.
And as we amend and as we insert, we're going to have you guys involved, you know, so with this smoke ordinance that we're trying to insert, we just want you guys, no pressure. We just would like, you know, your input, if you have any questions, you have any ideas or whatever, we are open to it, but it is hap, we're, we're trying to do it, and we're trying to, you know, push it forward, but with other things that we're trying to do with the ordinance as well, we would like your input. So things will be introduced to you where it previously probably, you know, was not, but we would like you guys' input, so we appreciate your due diligence, you know, that has been happening. And we hope that you would do the same with the smoke shop and get back to us. You can email us, you can call us, you know.
What I read, it seems like you just, you covered just about everything, trying to really, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
It's just a matter of following through, because you do a lot, and people say, well, that's another one, it doesn't make any difference.
Yeah.
There's another one, it doesn't make any difference, so, but this way, at least there's something on paper.
Exactly.
So that you can at least.
Absolutely.
Start working with those.
That's right, and just to follow up what's in that memo, we're basing this on templates that are already out there, local templates that the county's approved and has proponent of, so we have a basis to work off, we're not pulling this out of thin air, we've got a template to work with, which is really helpful.
One last thought, it just popped in my head. So you're saying they, they're not supposed to be within a certain distance with daycares and this and that and that? What about a certain distance within each other?
That's in there, that is in there, that's in there, and that might have been one of the things I was forgetting, yes, that's in there too. Yep, just like our daycares, we have a separation, right.
So take your time, I mean, as you are looking at it, and you have any questions, jot them down, you know, you can send them to us in an email, we can revisit it again during his report.
Yeah, and it's guaranteed we will, because in the end, once we've gone through a vetting process in the city, we'll bring it, the final draft to you to recommend to City Council to approve. So, and again, that may be a month or two out, just due to the process. All right, that's the end of my report, I don't know if you have any other questions?
We had, we had some.
I know it was page two and four missing out of here, because as I was reading through them.
Maybe when it was.
Oh, maybe the photocopy?
Because he does front and back, maybe when it was copied, the front and back wasn't there.
Well, yeah, what I can do is I can, I'll email you what we have, and that'll be the best probably way to get it to you.
Might have been copied on single pages, sorry about that.
Yes, that's all right.
So then we had one by right approval, which you all got inside your packets as well, just one fence.
The daycare center that we just approved.
Just the fence.
No, ma'am, yeah, no, it's not that, it's just someone's fence, a residence that wanted a fence in the front and around, because he has a dog, and the dog wanders to the neighboring property, and he's a twin house, so he wanted to fence in his frontage, his side, and his, his rear up to his driveway. So that was it.
Okay. Yes, since there's no other business, unless someone else has something else they want to say, we'd like to entertain a motion to adjourn.
I so moved.
I second.
All right, thank you, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
The meeting is now adjourned, and it is 3:10. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Make sure you, can you check to make sure everything I'm supposed to do on that?
I'll just, I'll take it.
I made my own copies.
What's up, you made your copy?
Oh, yeah. And then if you need something else, if I didn't do something right, then call her. I'm just joking. I might be, I might be going to bed by then, I'm a lady.
Oh, but no, I'm saying, I'll break you up.
Did you hear what I said? I'm a lady, I go to bed late, 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 late.
Yeah, so.
That's what you do when you retire.
Are you getting paid?
No, that's what I'm like, what is this? And wait a minute, your status.
Status. Public. We're not a public official, not a public employee.
I don't know what's in there, but I'm not touching it again. No, that's Harries, that's Harries.
And you're going to make copies for us for this?
Yeah, I'll see you in it, and then extra, I'll bring it to you, so you know.
And we're putting today's date on it and the year 24, is that correct?
I put today's date on mine. That's what I did, no, that, yeah, I put 24, yeah, yeah, but I signed it with the 25th.
All right, do you want a hard copy or a soft copy?
Why, why are they doing this, just so they can see that? And what are we doing here?
Under the table and all that stuff, it's all. Or if you decide, because it's risky to be consultants, one of these.
I'm an educational consultant. You need, you need something, I'm, I'm there for that. My, my student that I am consulting with right now is doing wonderful.
Oh, good.
Yeah, I was told your student is really.
Okay, today's the 8th. Yeah, today's the 8th.
From the teachers, you heard it from the teachers?
Up here. I've got these new glasses, I'm still like. Okay, status. It has public official, current, current public, public office, that's where I would put Plan and Commission.
She has gotten it, and she didn't like, she didn't like reading, no part, so that, and I realize this, because she couldn't break the rules, and I'm teaching her how to break it, every choking manner.
Okay, yes.
So, elementary teachers, that's right.
By the time they get to us and they can't read, I mean, there's nothing you can do.
But you know what, though, but, and they used to blame us, but. And. You see me, right? And then government, governing body, would I put City, Chester City?
But it's okay, it doesn't, they've already got it in here. If anything, I'll, I'll put it in there.
Where's that at? That's number five. And I believe that is it. You can let me see if you see anything I need to tap into. Correct, fix, add.
You got your name on there? I will make a copy.
That's what he said, that's what she named. Miss.
If I ever mess that up again.
We don't, we're not violent.
Well, now I do a spell check on Mr. Red.
Just don't do talk text.
We had a mystery.
Because that will gift, definitely give you some words that you were not planning. I'm telling you, a lot of words. My daughter's like, how does it probably use those words? I said, I don't know. They probably used to. Did you, they were something on the phone? This is still. Instagram thing? And the teacher was calling the next, and the kids were telling them what the names really were, you know, because they couldn't figure it out. And it would be like you said, stupid stuff, like what if you.
And that's what they called, when that one came through, I said, oh, they didn't call us. And that's been bad, but that's what they.
Shamira and Shamira. They were sisters? Nope. Oh, no? What was Shamira, what was Shamira? And when I would say something, she'd say, I'm Shamira, I'm Shamira. Fix this, I look at the one I want to. Shamira Shamira. That's right, that's right. I said, both those names, one of them better than you. That's right, absolutely. And I had the George Foreman thing too. I had two. Well, she's telling us dropping off at her house when she takes a bolo.
And they also. I'm fond of the same name.
Don't they really?
Okay, okay, okay. George, I don't know. Yeah. Well, you should have brought something with there.
No, we give it to you, and you give it to her. But you make it copy too, copy traitor.
Are you going to be doing right now?
Yeah, if you can.
Yeah, you're going to stay in the.
Sure, sure, that's all, thank you. Oh, she's going to pick them up, if she know where I'm at. Why don't people be calling me? And I'm like, well. Because she's over that side by you, so I. All of them were John. And they were all different sounds. I'll call you. Everybody else had a different middle. And she just said, just put it on my porch, and I said, you all right? She said, yes, I took the bag. But they did give them different middles, because they called me and asked me. And I took my message, I sent it to email. I said, that's a text message, right? Yeah. Oh, hell, that's my grandmother's. They may be related.
I was surprised.
It didn't hit me until.
When a friend.
Oh, really? I didn't know that.
Yeah, that was my buddy.
Yeah.
We worked together.
Remember, we used to see you, we'd be walking, and we'd see you going to Easter Blit, and we were only going halfway to Easter Blit. Yeah, 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 we'd walk with her just before she got.
She said, you know, I filmed that.